All right, everyone, welcome. It is five o'clock and today is July 20th, 2022. I want to welcome all of you to this San Luis County Work Conference Commission Session. Please stand and Commissioner Tony Haslett, would you lead us to the location?
Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Heavenly Father, we pray that you will lay your healing upon all those who are sick. We ask you to have compassion on all those who are suffering. So then we may be delivered from their trouble. They may be delivered from their challenges through this process. Please guide us through these discussions.
Mayor Rico, would you please lead us on the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Mr. Berenguer.
Commissioner Luis Lopez.
I am here.
Commissioner Pique.
I am here. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes, motion.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda. Move for approval of the agenda.
Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Has.
Yes.
Commissioner Pique.
Yes, thank you so much. The agenda items that we have on this tonight, first of all, I want to thank you, Mayor, and Council people, and the city representatives. Julie, welcome to all of you. We came up, Mayor Rico and I had the opportunity to exchange a couple of ideas, and the idea of working on a couple of issues together, collaboration, looking at the airport, and you had asked me a really good question, and I was wondering. All right, so one of the things that we're looking at is, let's begin the conversation and see what this goes, and then we basically, on the third item, we pretty much, it's an open agenda, other topics, as you may see, necessary. I think San Luis County and the city of Trinidad are beginning to create waves and strides statewide. As far as the opportunities that we have with the noise and the chatter that we have within our state parks, Highway 12, you know, the highway that is now a national, that simply of direction, which is imperative and important. So San Luis, Colorado, it is finally, I believe, that we're getting the attention that should have been done many years ago. And when we come together on the, with Sigot, there are also so many opportunities to collaborate. And the information that we get asked sometimes about the county, about the city, I think it's imperative and important that we come together and hopefully we can do this to become together. Because I believe it's very important for every girl. So on this particular one, we have item one is collaboration. What does that look like? What does that mean? And how do we embrace that collaboration between county and city to promote, to actually that first of all, and then for that extent, to attract industry to Los Angeles County? The city of Trinidad last week, Friday, they hosted a meeting on a company that was looking at, I think if we're going to use this energy source, brokering, utilities, power to the citizens, I mean, as far as understanding the whole concept, what does that look like for us, working together to make something of that perspective work? So pretty much, we're just going to go around the table and talk about what does collaboration look like between the city and county? Now, I'm waiting so far as looking what does collaboration mean on the web, Webster dictionary, right? But I think all of us know what that means. And so from that perspective, sincerely welcome and thank you for joining us here in our central college. We're working on HBAC, a project, we're going to be applying for a grant because you can feel it's a little bit warm. So hopefully, in the next 12 months, we'll have this entire courthouse retrofitted to have some more efficient cooling. We have had some of the projects that we have had later on, if you're interested, we'll tell you. We are, we'll be completing, the roofing is completely done, the foundation, the structure of the building has been completed, and secure, and electrical, and telephonic. We have phones now that are of the 21st century, so we really enjoy that. And so I think, from that perspective, it's important, important that we know and tell our constituents and our friends right across the street, you know, what is it that we're working on together? So Mayor and team, welcome. So let's open that up, commissioners?
Thank you. Welcome, guys. Some of the ideas that we've talked about in the past, with the city and county, we've mentioned, and we've come before you, and we've had discussions of collaborations on some of our law enforcement side. And it is still, to this day, something for the county that we have to use certain funds to assist at the days, one point of assets, sales tax, public safety, where you're helping take that to pay for a lot of the sheriffs and the temporary jail expenditures. That's something that we might want to look at in the future, of seeing budgets, collaborating work together. The inmates is one of our largest costs, and majority of the inmates, probably 40%, 50% are residents of our community, so whether it be in the city of Trinidad or outside, but majority, 27% are part here from the county and making help. And we have some public options as well, officially, right, since COVID. So that's one of the issues I have. My pipe dream, other than this courthouse, we started another, which was mentioned, with the transfer started four years ago. My other pipe dream is the jail setup. Possibly, I would love to see a courthouse in a jail all alone, where the inmates will not have to be transported. The expanses to the county of that would take the age back before it's a court, especially the high-profile cases we have, possibly. That might be something of a cooperation down the road we could look at. They did that years ago with the sales tax for the justice center. And ironically, back then, when the average county attorney, and he advised them not to build it there because of the locations and the whole, they had to get to the Ben Hessel. And with the irony, he was trying to fight over building it there, and they did it anyway. Now I'm trying to fix it because it's not, we've got a lot of issues. So that's, that's probably one of my biggest collaboration things I like to look at in the county, also with, this is what the general head of the year. That's probably the biggest thing for us right now, and I know Salon, which Salon went to you guys when he first came to office six years ago, funny, now he can ask for it. So what's the next step for law enforcement, working together with the city and the county? Because I think we're going to just continue to see the Fed mall, the drugs, the crime rate, rapians, continue to go. So I think we need to focus elaborately together on how we herd that, or how we can save some money. And then with the jail facilities, way they're deteriorating because of the way they're how they're built, or it's built at, you know, something like, it's kind of timeless and it's like, it's like, so that's one of my biggest, I like to talk about.
I would refer to students, the judicial buildings, the judicial. We need to, we need to concentrate on getting that tougher standard right now. It's deteriorating fast. We've suffered a lot of that in the last four years, and whether it be for cameras, or lighting, or security, it's been, it's been a tough role. And now with food costs, everything that's going on, we rebuilt the kitchen, and we know that, I think it was projected that 60% of the inmates that were in there come from the city, and ensure that they're out there, if we can give that. And I'm really excited about the, about the direction of the county, of Fisher Peak, and the collaboration efforts that we have with TLC, and Nature Conservancy, and City and County, and everything else, the project started, that's great. And I look forward to talking about the person who's here for any of the issues that are closing. Thank you.
Mayor?
You know, you mentioned something right at the beginning, is that at the state level, you know, we're beginning to get more numbers now than we ever have in the past. And it is more important now than ever that we all work together, not only you and us, but also the COG, and you guys are a very important part of this as well, because you will be supershipping of a lot of the federal funds. So I think that beginning to bring some more important people into this collaboration that we're talking about, it's really, it's more important now than ever. Because the more that we are together, the more we want to get noticed at the state level. Whenever we come up with an idea at the state level, to say, whether it's a bill, or supporting one or another for an initiative that either one of us has, like we've done in the past with the Fisher Peak, that we were very well recognized, because we were all there together. You mentioned about the issue with crime, that is a major issue within the, as we know, crime is continuing just to get worse. As a matter of fact, I talked to our police chief last Saturday at the, what was that thing, Farmer's Marca, and had a good conversation with him, and asked, what is the biggest issue? And he said, the biggest issue that we have is in the judicial system, is that they are really not incarcerating the people they should be. The bail bonds are at a low, there's a lot of PR bonds that are giving out, and so there's really no reason for these people to really get incarcerated, they're in for a short period of time, and then they're back out. So I've been thinking about that, and just a little off, you know, we had a talk, I called her, about Mike Beasley, and Sarah from Action 22, and was talking to her about that, and Mike, and I said, who really controls the strings as to incarceration costs and all this stuff? And of course, it's a state legislature issue.
That the schedule they follow.
Right.
And they create that.
Themselves, right, maybe. So what I was thinking about is that, you know, maybe we need to get together as a group, try to put together a bill, something from Action 22, and I think Tony, you know about this, just Sarah told me today, that first meeting with that mayor's room that's coming together is going to be like in the first round, the fourth of September. And I told her this judicial issue could be a major issue that I think that we need to talk about. Because I mentioned to her that, you know, we're not the only ones that are seeing this problem. So what we need to do is if they can get like the Pro 15 or the Pro 30 also involved, and CCI, and CMR, CML, beginning to get more in detail, I said, what needs to be done? Because our first responsibility is the citizens of this, of our communities. And, you know, if they're not safe, there's a major issue. So we need to come up with, maybe, they need to come up with legislation, they need to come up with a better plan, what to do with these people. One of the big problems is, is that on the democratic side, what's happening is, they are wanting to release more people out of the community. On the republican side, the sheriff's departments are highly recognized, but what's happened is that they don't want to take that responsibility of more incarceration. So there's an issue there. So that was interesting to me, and that's what Mike Beasley told me. So I think that there needs to be come together with minds of some sort to try to change that.
Five years ago, the legislation, less than four years ago, less than the drug, not the drugs you carry, and they basically made it a misdemeanor, they get you out on a PR bond, and that was at the legislative level. But at the time, that was, that was a little over a phrase we have in that field, five years ago, and we can't make comments to be less tough on small crimes than they call through the next year with the government bonds. But five years ago, on all that funding that they were trying to do, the state didn't want to pay for incarceration anymore. So what they did was they passed it down, they lessened the, tried to change the schedules so that the judges couldn't incarcerate them, the state management people, they could be on a county or a state chart and help the county jail. So they passed dollars on it.
And it's like, it's still current, the, their number, Governor Volts, this signed the bill this past year for 2023, and this model was telling us, and this affects TIF, Portura. Last week, the meeting with the inner room, we got the news from the city and Andy that we're going to have 26,000 coming in for the year to the quarter, which is our annual budget. So they asked me to investigate it this week, and I did, which I remember Don yesterday, because of some of the tax rates and stuff that they're doing up north, that's affecting our assesses, evaluations here in Los Angeles, all throughout the state. So that is quite down to TIF revenue as well.
So it's just continued, one thing I have to know, that they don't want to spend at the state level, they just pass it on the county levels to support or receive levels for that.
Well, you know, one thing that I talked to Mike Beasley about again, I came up with a, I asked Charlie, I asked Charlie, and you guys know my answer, does the county jail receive any money from any of the bail bonds? I mean, they don't. The money goes to the courts, and the money goes, you know, to the bail bondsman. The problem is, and I, my personal feeling is that right now, bail bond is sending like 15%. To me, that's ridiculous in the world. I think it needs to be raised to 25%. Percentage of that 10% should go to the county jail? For, because I mean, for their one that did the crime, they should pay into that system. I don't know whether that's due or not.
Another bill.
But that's, I guess, I could talk to him about that.
The difference between the district attorneys, the sheriffs, councils, and counties is so important. One of the big criminalizations, as Lisa mentioned, of drug possession, obviously it's going to create opportunities for people to carry just that amount, whether they are personally using it, or, so the loopholes are there if you will, but we counties are being impacted. One of the, a couple of years ago, I attended the National Conference for NAACP, National Association of Counties, and I went to a couple of presentations. One was DHS, so our social services, and then the other one was law enforcement. Between those three operations, at the national level, counties are stressed, because we have seen a growth of expenditures, our local grants and millbillions, I mean, we are pretty much, I mean, we're spending up close to $40 million in terms of San Luis County through DHS on assistance to our constituents. And we had a report yesterday, they think about this for our communities in Portland. 8,600 cases is what they manage.
In our county?
In our county.
8600 individuals are home.
14,000. So when you look at it and do the math, that's what, 50%? Higher than 50, and if we take what percentage of within our cities, so those are challenges. And then, of course, the other presentation that we looked at was law enforcement. The expenditures that we're seeing there are extreme. And Mayor, you are to be correct, we need to get out from being partisan, because a lot of legislation carries partisanship, and then brings expenditures to, in a bipartisan way. At the end of the day, all of us have to pay it. We were doing an assessment, Colorado will be a few billions, billion dollars more in taxes. We are today than we were from years ago, you know, by legislation that was passed through the state and signed by our governor. And then, you know, when there is the opportunity to add one, we give feedback, by the way, Kevin Bonner, when it came to the collective bargaining issue, to use one of the examples, cities and counties, we all came together, Kevin is a technical representative for CML, and we have a really great relationship with CCI, constant communication, but when we see that it's going to be bad county, it doesn't have to be partisan, this is the group that's pushing it, we therefore need support it. I think we need to look at how is that an impact on counties, and where do we need to push back to get, regardless of our affiliation, because at the end of the day, it's our constituents, you know, talking about right now, building perhaps a justice center, who's going to pay for that? Yes, from there? There are other amendments?
I'll mention one other item on this, pardon me, I'll let the rest of the people talk about. We start to talk about collaboration in general, I'll have some comments. Had a constituent mention, asked me one day, a while back, when, let's say, a drug seller is caught, and he's caught, and they confiscate his, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. He asked, he said, isn't there any type of tax ramifications that can be levied against these people and their properties for what they do? And I said, I don't know. So I called the district attorney, and he didn't have an answer for me, so I had to get back to him, ask him, see what he thought about that. But it was an interesting concept.
I think, I'm having a lot of thoughts. I think it's good that you're bringing up the issue of law enforcement, because it is something that affects both of us. My interactions with the Partnership for Drug Free Community and the opioid settlement, those are things that are designed to address that from a social point of view, from a, let's help people see that taking drugs and making that a lifestyle is not the way to go. That, I think, is a valid use of the money that we're getting from the opioid settlement, as well as tax money. Putting people into jails doesn't tend to do anything, other than they are, you know, without drugs for the time period they're there, and then they're out, they're doing it again. I think all of those are social issues that we've got to also attend to with the funds that we have available to us. And it sounds like that's the direction that we've gotten from the state, is that that's the way that should be used. I don't think we've seen yet the impact of that, changing that situation, but it definitely is an issue for both the county and the city. We have far too many people who are dependent on government resources because of drugs. And it's a, it is a, we've got to change the social milieu of this area to people being, having an idea that being devoted to education, and, or starting a business, or something that's going to get them to a place other than where they are. So I'd like to work with the county about those kinds of matters. And just as an aside, I do know your courthouse is, it needs work, I get to do some mediation work for the county court here, and one day I was in the county court, and I was sitting across the council table from the parties doing mediation, and I kept staring, there's this huge crack in the back of that room, and I was like, that must drive Judge Mosell crazy, sitting there watching that thing. So, and then I get to also do that in Huarafano County, which has a new justice center, so I don't know how they were able to do that, but it's a fantastic building. And there's some issue there that y'all need to get the money that it takes to fix this.
Well, we've done that specialization of this. The concrete was, it was an actual water being cracked that caused the issue.
It's scary, like.
And, yeah, when we first came in, when I first came into office, that's my office right over there, and I got a huge crack in my wall, which is above the judicial room downstairs, that has the same crack, but that's been addressed. And we had to do that.
On the partners, I remember when that started up, was it four years ago?
It's been a while.
Three and a half years ago. The concept, when commissioners, and before we joined with the courts on that, it was just communication with the law commissioners, when we had a town hall meeting here, and a lot of, I think, for your mayor, and a lot of folks, Joey DeGardner did a presentation, Jim Montoya, the commissioner, regarding their children and their progress, and so. So that was the whole concept back then, was not just incarceration, but to figure out how we can get funding mechanism, so we could go next, and so we could start a program, I think the concept was, was to assist those drug addicts, whether they're revolving or voluntary, and as soon as they get out, you keep them appropriate, that's not court order, but a voluntary type thing. And then COVID hit, everything kind of fizzled out on that. And since the momentum needs to come back to the same concept, and if we can show success rate here in Los Angeles County, then it'd be easy for the mayor and the city council of the county to get CCI to sponsor a bill, or get the district attorney to sponsor an association, or some group to find a funding mechanism for that treatment. And I agree with you, being in jail is not going to cure from being a drug addict, as soon as you get out, you're going to find again. But how do we give them assistance, voluntary, and then the support, voluntary? So that was one of the things that we were talking about again, if we can get that reinvigorated again. I know that that board, I think, thinks it's still part of that group.
On my way out, I know you're interested in getting back in, so. One thing so important that, one of the early tenants of the Drug Free Communities, and when you worked on the opioid settlement, was this detox and rehab center, that every day we have had is at, and so what if we have someone that is in need of, who went through education, they have gone through prevention, they've been there and back twice, what do we send them to? And that's the expense that we, even through the opioid settlement, there's not enough money to build any new infrastructure, so we're going to have to collaborate with a partner. And at this particular place, the nine counties, that I think, and the amount is less than a million dollars, I believe, per year, so when you look at nine counties, say $900,000, it's going to be very, very limited dollar amount. For us to go and get a one, now can we get grants with that? We're talking about that, once we get a two-year planning plan, can we use the same funds to leverage or supply for those grants? We can and we should, but as far as having a rehab center in Los Angeles County, the funds are not going to feed them. So our population would have to be probably transferred to Cuadlo, which is the nearest and the largest part of services, complete services, and that's why we might be part of the region then. Otherwise, we have eight counties here, well, who has? Nobody does. So great point, and you know what, I will make a, I believe we have a meeting, let me look at it, and we'll exchange information, I'll send it to you, it just came out, we have another meeting here coming around fairly quick for the opioid settlement.
Just to let you know, that House Bill 1215 addresses part of what you're talking about.
The one, the licitivism.
Licitivism, it addresses part of it, it doesn't address the part of trying to do something while these people are incarcerated, but when they're coming out, I think there's going to be some help for some.
And that's just Trinidad.
That's just Trinidad.
That was what that bill was.
Trinidad, Los Angeles County.
And if you guys want, I, as a board member of the Board of Health, I can ask that board if they should partner in with that type of system as well, you know, some sort of treatment, that does fall in line with, if they don't partner in some sort. So if you guys would like, I'll mention that to him and have him look into it.
Because we need to have everybody work together, considering.
Oh, no, go ahead, wait, when you're done. If I may insert here. Do, do you have alternative sentencing here? Do you have an alternative sentencing program in this region?
I do not, I don't.
I don't know. And as you're talking, I mean, I know that this is outside of my, my area of expertise, but I have seen success with the community court for minor crimes. It's, it's kind of a, what, what, what Washington County had at it was, we would have a community court, where we would have area nonprofit agencies, law enforcement, rehab centers, so a mix of for-profit, nonprofit, that they could all be at a library or some kind of public building, and probation officers would sentence whoever for various, my estimate, crimes, to go, and they would either be sentenced for community service, or to enroll in some of these available programs that were already existed. It's community court.
No, but what would be alternate?
Oh, alternative sentencing.
Alternative, other testing.
And, and that, I mean, that's not going to solve anything, but I know that as jails are being taxed with capacity issues, some creative solutions for ways in which we can plug in residents, or for whatever reason, if they're down a certain path, it can at least kind of make this on alternatives that are a little more cost.
Like I said, ideas, what alternatives would be available.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I kind of sit in a place where I still don't have complete familiarity with what's available in this area, but that just came to mind.
That sounds interesting.
Yeah, one of the, one of the points I think that the other, we still actually have charging, chief police, as well as the sheriff, build a bunch involved in the, I mean, I don't mind serving, but I think we have the people that have the areas of expertise as to how to work to, and then we can assist, we can come behind and give support. So right now, they're going to be applying either the city chief or the county sheriff are going to be participating. are going to be participating more actively on that particular entity compensation with the rest of the group. We can go out and do, if we will, be searching for dollars. But as far as the education, all these things are quite incredible. One program that I worked with in Colorado Springs was teen court through the truancy program. And teen court, it was so much structure that I tell you one thing, every year, Judge Martinez in Colorado Springs is the one that was maybe still in charge of the whole thing, and I became a participant through the college I was working at. And that teen court for truancy and other malfeasance to school, that court, you brought me here, we were your peers, your friends. They had a prosecuting attorney, they had a defense attorney, and all students. And whatever sentencing that student wanted, they were in it. It had to be complied with, otherwise they would be expelled. And the success rate of that, so we can look into that. And I tell you, you just, you mentioned this to me, we gave the funding $75,000 for the adult program.
I, I don't remember if you can say something?
There's a juvenile program that did an alternate sentencing, taxing the juvenile, and then there was a new trial by also by the state, so he has a technical.
I think, I think our structure is the DA here in Los Angeles County because of the passage of the 1A safety tax, was able to set up an adult intervention program. And then I think the state funds juvenile intervention to a point, I don't know if it's the same that you're talking about, or maybe it's, maybe we need to...
Essentially trying to find some creative solutions within the capacity that you already have with the planned place to get to the capacity that you need. Obviously, you don't want to plan for more criminals, but...
You know, what's interesting, the teen court especially, it's two things. One is that the school districts need to be at the table. And the other thing is they need, they need to buy in, you know, to, to this.
It's, you know, it's, I'll tell you what, if the conversations keep on, I can reach back out to that program in Colorado Springs and Judge Martinez, who's really different mind, as well as Judge Mays from Walsenburg, who was involved in the program. Both of them are very, very involved with student truancy. And of course, it was sponsored by the judicial system. So the courts in Colorado Springs support the training for all the students that are going to be serving, whether as judges, as prosecuting attorneys, as defense attorneys. So they had the legal training, if you will, with the judge in the group. I attended a couple of these, the judge actually, the teen court, because there was times that somebody would say, "Well, you know, oh, no." Motion, whatever the case, but he worked through the process. And I tell you, every year we went to the banquet for teen court, and a lot of the students that went to the program would be coming back seven years after saying, "Wow, you know what? This program, this is what it is for me." They were giving credit to that. If it wasn't for this program, then this wouldn't. And part of the, so you had the school district, you had the colleges also as part of the whole thing to provide now the opportunity for students to get involved in San Luis, even burn the road through the college. Perhaps, whatever the case might have been, but the program worked when I was there. And I tell you, that might be something that I might hope, I can see what information we have. Without belaboring the point, anything else that we want to talk about this collaboration? I think the, the conversation is so right, we just don't want it to die in the light.
I think as far as collaboration, this is, like I mentioned earlier, you said that it's important that we all collaborate together, we work together. And whenever projects come up of any type, it's so important that we really try to understand what we're collaborating on, to be able to say further. If we have a large project moving on, or we're moving, that we need, we need the support of everybody. It's really, really important because if we get support from just, you know, one entity, it's just kind of like this issue that we had a while back, we were expected to have support from not only the city, but the county, but PW, or PWP, I think it was, and others. So we did get a lot of support. And I understand the reason why you guys were not able to, to do that, because you hadn't met. We operate a little bit differently at the city sometimes, if we understand that there's a good project that we know that the council is going to support, you know, we usually will sign off it and then we'll bring it forward at the next meeting to, to take care of the issue, to go on. And you guys may operate a little bit differently, but if there's questions in between, it's easier to sometimes just, on an issue, call over, call somebody and say, "This is, these are my concerns." So that we can take care of them upfront, so that we can, because sometimes I just don't want the county to miss out on opportunity, I don't want the city to miss out on opportunity because it's an opportunity not only for us, the electoral officials, it's an opportunity for the citizens of our area.
Just to address that too, again, I think communication is imperative.
Yes.
We didn't find out until the Friday before, and we got to have it in by Monday or something like that. And we've done that already once with the, with the Raffenspike, and our staff pulled them all weekend to make sure that they met all those protocols. And we can't make a decision that quick and have that happen. That was a fluke, but we actually got that pulled off, you know, the ULC and everything else that had to happen. But, and with PWP, I sit on that board, and Julie did the right thing, she sent the letter of support, but what happened was the board wasn't aware of what was going on. We had, we had air leaders that, that sit on that board that were not aware of what had happened, and they weren't in support because they had heard that it's going to be maybe moving up the dam down the river. And without the army corps being involved, there's no way that they could have supported that anything because the army corps would have to find the same structure in the river. So that's why we had to pull that back. And it was on our, our call, we told Julie, we understand Julie wants to get along with everybody, wants to play nice in the sandbox, but we have to follow protocol. And the board wasn't, wasn't aware of what happened. We had to pull that back, and here we are in a hurried-up situation where if we'd have a month of communication beforehand and we could have followed protocol, we could have been on board fully with that. Because it's not that we don't support the idea, as long as all of the people that are involved have adequate...
I know where you're coming from, and that was the problem that was, we even saw ourselves, they put us up against the wall because the white paper was due one week, which we did. We got over that one. And then the next paper was due like within eight or 10 days, shortly after that. So it was like, let's try to get this through. And we kind of put you guys in bad, bad position.
But give us, give us a hand.
Yeah.
We got a call.
I'm sorry. Say, I have a personal question that you're talking about, which is that, I agree, I, when you attended a meeting here recently, I turned that statement, I was part of that audience, and I was with the radio, most Colorado staff, and they blow the bones about this collaboration and this community to seek their grounds. Don't waste the staff's time to fill out the applications. It's not that. And I know from a county perspective, right now, our plea, we're going to be wanting to chase that person, grants, make improvements out of the fairgrounds. And the points I put up there and do with whatever you want to, possible ground rules, the former agency's party in the process, that any will be asking for better support. And as we all know, when it reaches the week before the deadline or the witching hour, we don't have time to review those applications, and we don't have time, both to signal what the county will get in front of the proper boards, councils, to have them take action on it. And then send in, you know, permanent information early, and revisions are made, revisions are made, the state of the earth, so the other entities know what's going on, or common or surprise or anything. And they realize that any support will need to be approved by the other agencies. We mind further meetings at which such approval is considered. Again, our board meets first and third Tuesdays, can actually call a special meeting, but those are hard to get set up because we've got managers, we've got state people, we've got small business owners that have their time, already dedicated to something else about 80% of the time.
The one thing that I mentioned at that meeting at the college that day is, I think it's really important, let's say the county has a grant out there, you guys are the ones that are putting forth the grant. Any information that we may have or any concerns that we have should come directly to whoever, to you or chair or whoever's kind of the head of the, of the grant, that all that information should come into you. There should be, no other, any other outside sources should not be seeking information elsewhere. They should come to you and say, "These are my concerns and these are my questions." And that you research it so that you are clear with that. And the same thing like, that's a city grant, all the information should, questions should come into us first. Same thing like CAU, same thing. You're there with a grant, all the questions should come to you, so you can disseminate all that information properly. Alvin, Alvin doesn't get confused, and that's what's happening.
And, and for the county, a presentation of all three of us, because we can't act without the coherence of all three of us. So a presentation of all three of us, then we can, we can start to work on it.
You know what, now that you are going to be acquiring a newer city manager, and just see that all the time in the world, I think, but, but I think they, that the county administrator, the city manager, I'm going to say, I don't know, once a month, and they can actually arrange a calendar, one hour, 20 minutes, even if it's a phone call, exchange information. As we go through the process, you know, I spent my career in higher ed, one of the things I would do was a phone call, whether you needed it or not, once a month. It's going to be so imperative, and that way, if we have a project that is burning, send out an email, begin the conversation and dialogue, and even plan, how do you get this project to fruition? But getting in the weeds is going to be Mr. Gordon County and Mr. Robert.
Exactly. And when he gets tires in 10 years, he's going to hire that on to grant riders.
And I think...
Yeah, I put them in 10 years.
If I may, it's important to also kind of build in those contingencies that knowing that there is going to be a last minute, like sometimes with all the planning in the world, so what would the protocol be? So we kind of establish, like, what is that going to look like? Whether it's, you know, the city manager, county manager, and myself, or whoever else is involved in the grant, we can get together and we have some sort of authorization by our boards, whether it's a grant amount capacity or what, I mean, that's just something, I think that's another potential ground rule for us to consider, because those are going to happen. I mean, we want them to be the anomalies, knowing that, you know, we set this plan up, providing for as much communication as possible and keeping everything open, but allowing...
That's kind of what happened with this particular issue.
Sure, and because it happens.
You know, the meeting that we had with that housing meeting, I believe, was you and Walsenburg, Trinidad, and Marin County, we heard as a region, we're going through the same thing. And, and you know what the county denominator was? For communication. For all of us. That was the county denominator, and that's what I'm saying, as we go through the new acquisition and that day, get an opportunity to meet here, I can't quite place Mr. Robert, but welcome. I have an opportunity to be with them that day, quite a great opportunity to begin a relationship on collaboration. So great points.
Speaking of collaboration, Jennifer, if you're in the Council of Governors, could be another great outlet for our grant pass-throughs that the city and the county can take on their own.
Right. And that was, I was going to say in general, I don't want to belabor it, but, but that's where I sit. I sit as a regional facilitator for, I mean, not only this, this county and Trinidad, but also Huayn County and Walsenburg. And so, I mean, this, tonight is a good primer because tomorrow is, I mean, and we have this meeting in regards to housing and broadband, which I'm hoping to have some regional collaboration along there. But it's essentially identifying what are the strengths that CAU has and where we can, where we sit is we are, we have the capacity to bring the funds to apply for the grants and to work kind of as a neutral party for the region to bring that funding in to support the businesses.
Well, you know, it's interesting is that, you know, I've been there for six and a half years. I've had more communication with her since you've been here the last three months than I have with the previous directors, not director, but directors, these six and a half years. So that's an address, and that leads to being open, working with us as a group, and I think that's really important.
Yeah, contrary to the newspaper, of course, and the former director left, that wasn't the reason why, his contract wasn't the reason why, exactly, his job wasn't good. We'll see what the newspaper writes about him.
I know, it's coming up tomorrow, it's coming up tomorrow.
I don't know if she's going to write the next thing, but I did give a lot of praise for Ms. Oliver, and also for Oliver too, for what she's been doing, the assistance to Mike for all these years, and interim, you know, Mr. Robert?
I don't even know.
Huayn County.
That's her career.
But remember to get through this drug pandemic and issues we're having here in our small town, our water issues, our, our festivals, we want to do everything in my business together. No more separation of city, county. You know, COVID could have some breaks with that for two years for all of us. But I'm, we need everybody, including hospital, purchasing, getting involved, especially for the drug rehab, for youth, for kids, on the school districts. No, the old boards that came and get along, awesome, so as much as get along with that is wonderful. So that's enough of that, combining all of the school districts and everybody collectively to get it. Where, this county is spotlighted, I suspect, you would not believe, at the state level right now. The 34 boards that we sit on collectively, we have a lot of attention now, because we're everyone, the state, federal, local, and we've got, we have moves on, and now it's Tony saying, you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And this board, we have that momentum. City Trinidad has a momentum right now, all the things you're doing with the Fox Theater, with Fishers Peak, and by the way, State Park is packed on Sunday, Trinidad State Park, the camera, we're arriving late tonight. Yes, well, let's go check out Fishers Peak. There was a crickets, there was nobody there. It's too hot. Too hot, right? Very often in the water. But those two state parks, we rent here in our area.
Well, you know, that's why, you know, when, when you two came back, came on as commissioners for your, when it was, and you were the chairman, and I came to visit too, and I said, you know, it's time that we all begin to work together, because working together for our entire county as a, as a citizen, to get now our managers together to work together, working together with us, make, make a health difference.
Good, good, well, you know, so I think we do have some homework, some next steps. I would definitely think about the opioid, I'll send that information to you if you want to join the meeting, so we're welcome to, and we came to live in Seala, priorities that we're setting up in there. I sent that information, the latest information I had already to you, I believe. Anyway, let me double check here. If I, if I did not, I will go ahead and send that to you with all the write-ups that are in progress to your plan. And then what, what we're going to be looking at is what are the priorities in five counties? We know education is going to be one, prevention is going to be huge, but then what about that detox, that, what about that treatment center? Who and when is that going to happen? So all that information, I extend that to you, and let's open up the lines of communication. And then for the free communities, I will send whatever information we have for the next meeting as well. So we'll begin the next steps. I think we'll, let's not, this is communication, beginning to, to build the platform. But I really want us to now go to the opportunity of the Paris Stokes Airport. We have had a, I don't want to capitalize it, because I know Mr. Gordon County probably has more accurate information, but we have looked at grants. Oh, okay, all right, several millions of dollars probably in the last few years.
Yeah, the FAA, I'm sorry. The FAA dedicates, allocates to the Paris Stokes Airport $150,000 every year. We've been on, well, projects in pipe, we have five or plan, capital group, to have the airport, you know, Walsing, pipe, we can even carry those funds over here every year to build a pool that allows to go and make improvements. And the one we're working on right now is the taxiway. The runways were actually, runway, I should say, was addressed a few years ago, so building up the funds. The engineers are going to start designing the taxiway improvement. The, one of the firms is out there doing course today to... The, one of the firms is out there doing course today to give the information to those engineers to make a design of that taxiway improvement. There's our capital improvement plan, it's hard to see, but again, every year the FAA sends Los Angeles County and Perry Stokes Airport a hundred thousand dollars. And in addition to that, the federal government passed the Light Bars and Infrastructure Law according to bill. And we get a hundred twenty-two thousand dollars for the next five years, so adding that to our hundred fifty thousand to help make further improvements out there at the airport. And in addition to that, we went after a grant, a successful Adola Planning Grant, and matched it with twenty-five thousand dollars of county funds to come up with a conceptual industrial apartment, as you see there. In addition to that, the board set aside a hundred thousand dollars to do pavement in between the hangars. Years ago, we stuffed millions out between the hangars, replaced millions out there, shot with asphalt rejuvenated, we didn't try to firm up the top half inch, but it started to fall apart. And pilots are not real fond of rocks and gravel and other things, and they're crops. So we went out the crops on the plains, and we're in the process right now of stabilizing the base materials. And the board's already awarded the contract for pavements, we've also heard sand. So within the next, hopefully, three to four weeks, we'll have new pavement, put in between all those hangars, and hopefully encourage some of those pilots to put their planes to other airports to bring their planes back once we get that asphalt putting planes. There's the terminal, and you will notice, or please notice, as you walk into the terminal, that sign above the terminal door, Trinidad. The sign got clogged by hail, as our, as our airport manager said, he took it down, but it's repairable. Apparently, the city of Trinidad owned or operated the airport at one time. I just took some pictures inside, that's, when you go into the terminal, that dance side, there's a silver fountain there, that's the backside of it. Hallway, and the hallway is right here. That's the hallway, we've actually rented out two offices there to DOS aviation for their touch and go flights. And if they ever decide to start to train there for those pilots, they've rented out two offices, I believe it's five hundred dollars a month. And that's the other direction you come into the terminal. That's all I have on the airport.
I know I was out there a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, maybe some work, maybe some work has been done inside, it looks like. Is that true?
renovation inside? Renovation?
No, the, as of.
Renovation.
It it needs to be renovated, because we need to rehearse Frankie's.
Because if you're going to fact, if you're going to fact somebody to come in there, people fly in, I think, updating at the inside. One of the, one of the projects that we went out there when I first met, right?
The three of us.
The three of us went, and so we visited Redstone Airport. It is, for our area, it's what we would like to see here in San Francisco, it's really a lot of energy. That also, we pay a best of statement out at the terminal, so that's pretty much ready to go. It's a completely, that that went just along with, we, the hospital flew in one of our emergency rescue helicopters a few months ago, so they had nothing else, we went there, and I was pretty proud to show them inside. You know, just simply, a little bit old, but clean and attractive, but no.
And the city, you know, and the county, you know, the history of it, the city and the county shop is at the park. We got that, you know, the stick, we got, are we got.
Are you guys ready to trade back, Jay-Z?
So the concept, the concept of the airport, since I got an office, and the fairgrounds, those are two of the main expanses in the county, not the rest of the jail system, where, these are possibilities where we can turn that losing revenue into a great revenue. So, you mentioned earlier about the fairgrounds, we have a master plan, we're making the entire facility out there, including basketball courts, baseball fields and soccer fields, and closing, committing conventions, that center underneath the area, the box shows. So that's in the master plan, we've got four of them. This is the next step, that's in, that's in the process, so this will be our next thought process of a diamond in the rough here to attract more and more people, and Red McRobb has been flying in and out of there, he wants us to build bigger hangars so he can keep his plane in there. But before we can, we can rent out a Taj Mahal, Taj Mahal, and get that Taj Mahal price, we've got to fix this rate. And that's what we got right now, so how do we get to that? There's one of the collaborations possible, the city and the county, or maybe on, you know, the Perry Stokes Airport, who was training that airport for that, I think Perry Stokes after the man with the.
I don't think it's.
For your, so the county changed the name to that, but it could, you know, they could be, it could be Lopez Moreau, or it could be Frankie Azar. And Azar told me about it four years ago, making the runways bigger so my employees can fly into town instead of going to Redstone. And so, there's so many opportunities for that airport for us. So we're not having the same money in there, we're just costing the county tax fare, but we can actually make it a regular point through our facilities. And we have planes coming and landing, we have facilities, but also attract more people to come to the city Trinidad, spend more money here. And kind of understand our hotels, but downtown, we, council government gave us a brochure recently for our transportation, so now we're thinking of adding a shuttle park or a longer park as well, in the future, if that's needed. They have Tanemento, they have, so, see, but that's just my plan about the airport and my thoughts about it, since I got an office to help stop the leave on that and turn that asset into something truly economical for the whole community.
Oh, yeah, that's been talked about for many, many years, is trying to change the atmosphere of the airport, its uses. And I don't know, have you guys checked in to look up this stimulus money that's out there right now? Is there anything that'd help you to upgrade?
There's a grant that Tony was working on too for, Julie, you had a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, when I lived up in Alaska and I was working on my pilot's license, I took an aircraft maintenance class through college there, and I, it may be out there, but I know Trinidad State is working on different opportunities to offer. So maybe you could tie in with the airport for aircraft maintenance or other aircraft pilot related things. It could be win-win for the college and the airport.
You know, and one of the, one of the factors, when I was at the college, the high cost startup of these programs is an impediment for small community colleges, but the opportunity is there, I mean, a good partnership. And as the opportunities go through the process, maybe, maybe we are right to do something as a city and county. But I think collaboration, the airport to me, is one of those things that it's right there for the city and county to work on. And the question was asked last week at a meeting, how big of a plane can we land? And so, Mr. Doric did our research, that's correct.
What our consultant says, since it's a public runway, we can't forbid any plane from landing on that runway. But, and I had sent the board an email earlier this afternoon, there are recommended restrictions on the weight and the size of the plane and utilizes that runway, the one runway that's paved, so I'll get that up online. But, yeah, when the rehab is done with the runway, they actually, we actually had a hundred foot wide runway, it was a little bit longer than this runway, but the FAA, because of the eight or six thousand planes that landed there, they're down seventy-five, shrink the length a little bit. So I asked our consultant, I said, well, if the bigger planes are forbidden to land on that runway, how are we ever going to get back to an older runway if we need it? And that's when he mentioned, he, that as a public runway, we can't forbid any plane from landing. Can you give us the information on what the recommended loading and widths?
And the, then the master plan that we have out there, that the creators have, has a second runway on it? This has never been developed, right?
It's never been, it's a ground one.
But, I'm sorry, but one more thing on the whole conceptual for the industrial park, that's the whole reason why the commissioners are moving forward with that, because Tony has something in the works possibly, do you want to come up with that one? But, so we're making an industrial park, we can start renting out those parcels, the lab parcels, so we can get the revenue coming in. That'll offset the expenditure.
Where will that, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, one of the things that, you know, we have, we have two areas of transportation for commercial, and that would be the train going through Trinidad and their airport. And I think that if we work to try to establish the ability to utilize those services, that's what's going to attract other businesses and maybe some small manufacturing to come into the area. And I think, so I think they need to know that, we have those resources available to the ground.
You know, I was talking to someone, we have UPS employees, and they're telling me that they want to, it was possible to land on the UPS freight so that we can keep this file locked here in UPS storage warehouse, I told them, I don't know.
They, they live there every day.
In what, gemoty, gemoty?
They live there every day. It's a small thing, but that's where, that's where we get our.
Your nights, your night conditions.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, I'm not a high-flying kind of lifestyle person. So it hadn't really occurred to me how important it is that we have a functional airport that, so that people can find it out, and possibly a boutique airliner that would come with some frequency so that you could catch a flight to DIA from Trinidad. And Wally Wallace, who's our economic department director, and I were talking about that years ago, and it's always been in the back of my mind, but it's true. It's, and it's odd to me that, that we don't even really, as people who live in the city of Trinidad, I don't really even think about that we have an airport. I'm more aware that Raton has an airport because of Whittington and Hunting and stuff like that, but I think it would be used more frequently, it would be used by developers who want to come in, and like you said, McGrath, that he has business up north, so he flies in and it would be nice to have.
And once you have the connectivity, one of my fellow commissioners, we were going to be at a national conference in Washington DC, and he said, you know, let's try and fly out of Reno. What, yeah, he says TSA, you're in there in five minutes, and if you go with Denver, you're going to spend an hour. So you fly from Reno to Denver, so the connections, the flexibility, and then, of course, the services that you give back to your constituents. I, I would imagine that Raton is fairly busy, Alamoza has a really good facility as well. And, and so think about it, I think the opportunity for all of us to work on this, we'd love to see Trinidad and San Francisco airport, big sign up there.
And a tour?
This is the collaboration that we write some grants together, that we employ, that we develop.
Do you think we could arrange a tour?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, Erin was asking me about it.
I'd really like to see it.
It was me, it was.
Julia, you think?
I would love to.
Would you like to fly a plane so you can give Erin a?
We'll, we'll chat, we'll chat. We'll, we'll, so I think we might.
Absolutely.
Got to test the capacity of that runway, right?
Yeah.
With the, with the, um, shuttle.
Yeah, actually, I was down there with, I think, I forget what general was here for Ford Carson, he flew in some helicopters, and flew around there, but that was from the, the airport, almost, it's of the fifties era. And as a matter of fact, my sister, my sister, when she was, this was like in nineteen fifty-three or fifty-four hours, just a kid, and she flew out of there, she was going into the waves, and she flew out of this airport to wherever she was going. And I remember standing and watching her get off the plane and go off the leak.
Do we have to ask any questions?
No, I was researching how New Mexico got their funding for their airport.
Okay, so it's owned by the city.
You're old.
It's owned by the city of Trinidad, or the city of Raton, and they lease it out to their organization, so they, you know, to get to that, that one, to lease it out, who's going to want to lease a business that's not making their airport? So that's, that would be the, the first step to getting to that level, and then, so they set out to a professional company that, that run airports. And that's when you get your connected flights to public, and stuff like that, so. But we did have all the DC seven, my dad, when I was a boy, flew the plane down, remember the drug plane that was on Mesa? David Lutero, and another pilot flew that plane down, they got the DC seven in their car. That was, I mentioned in my mom's garage, one of the, there's evidence when you was district attorney.
We have a lot of downstairs that are moving, buying a few years, a lot of, of land, of branch land, turning it into a, like, hunting mech, and some of them are our neighbors right up here by Draven Gunnerage. And they fly in and out, and they use that a lot, and that's just happened over the last couple of years. And I see that happening more, there's going to be more of those type of vehicles, so it would be good us to do what we can.
Yeah, it brings us closer to other places, it's a lot faster, obviously, to fly than to drive.
And I wish we had a turn like what Batting has to help with the improvements and the financial part of it. We're kind of here with that.
Well, we do have, if we would just reach out as bacon, and Marty Hill, they're the two that step up to the plate.
They would, yeah.
Well, I just was going to say, if there is a person that's interested in, you know, we see out there. So that'd be a little more relevant if we get that accomplished on the side note, too, the military is purchasing fuel from us out there. I looked at the numbers, and I should have done this four years ago, and I did, and I looked at the numbers, and they were actually purchasing fuel from us cheaper than what we were buying from the market. So I started calling the nurses, and they're like, what is this? Stop giving any fuel to the airport, and just break even. And so what it is, they work with their finance secretary, Chris Corbey, Chris God's access to how to adjust his prices, I think the military's complimenting where you're doing this. Or at least make a little bit of money out of the military.
That would be something to bring up, because I know they're having their meeting, I think, around the first of September. They're going to have it here in July, but they postponed because they had a change of command yesterday. And Sean Brown is the new Garrison Commander, so he will be there at the meeting, it's going to be in Walsenburg this time. So that'd be something to bring up if necessary.
So Phil and I have two years left on our terms, right?
Yeah, about eighteen months.
Yeah, so maybe we get this done in two months.
See, it's on eighteen months, the new, the new name of the airport, so let's keep working on this. And what we'll do is let us know next week, late next week, or here after, when that will work for. And I like Louis' mentions, we have a nice one also out there, inviting the community to come and see it, and we'll open up.
Let us get to make.
Okay, there we go, so we'll, we'll connect, but I definitely would like for you to see it, because, and then, it would be nice to, to those acquaintances that we have, you mentioned, uh, Terry Azar, I don't know, I'm sure he was playing, but why not begin to use them frequently, since we have them, so. Anyhow, great, great conversation, hopefully we can really partner on that, we would like to get that off the ground. And if he would be able to become the manager for us, with the partnership with the city and the county, that would be an amazing, amazing win-win for our citizens in San Francisco and cities, so, great. Any other topics that we got here that I was telling you, is other copies that we have on hand? You know, the one thing I was thinking about is, you know, we've been talking about all the possibilities out there, and that's good, but sometimes we hear issues that are within the county, you guys hear issues within the city, and I think it wouldn't hurt to bounce those back and forth, if we do have any, that way we can answer them, and you can answer them for us. And I, you know, that's part of all transparency across the board, and I think you probably would, would probably like to see that.
I, I really like the idea of Mr. Doric and Mr. Rover having more plane meeting at least, so that we all are aware of what we're working on, because I've never understood since the day I moved here why there isn't a better collaboration, because we are economically dependent on each other, interdependent, and what benefits the county benefits us and vice versa. And I, I'd just like to see us kind of wake up to that as a community and enjoy one another's help and support.
That communication, we don't want to duplicate services, so if we're, if we're going after, I sit on the EIPF Commission of the Hill, and so I get to review almost every grant that comes through, I don't get to participate in Trinidad and the Walsenburgs grant, but I get to review all those, and it behooves us to always be aware of what the government's doing, so we don't duplicate, you know, the funding mechanism. And that's kind of. And that's kind of where we got crossways on this bill was, you know, why aren't we putting in for another grant when you have $100,000 available through the grant that we've already taken the lead on? You know, it didn't make sense for the county to take the lead on that again. And DOLA looks at that, too. Why are, I mean, we've already committed this $100,000, you know, we don't want to talk about $50,000, $25,000, $25,000 still available through that pastor planning grant, and that's where we're confused. We, then we saw that it was a duty to help us.
So during that grant process, the nature conservancy and the trust of government pulled out, or pulled commitment, and they didn't have it. So I said $50,000, they were supposed to be $50,000 for an other grant, they removed $25,000 each. DOLA left it open, if you wanted to come back with that other $50,000, the two other partners, all that was covered.
The reason why that was done is that DOLA was only able to put in $150,000, so that narrowed that back down to the $300,000. So that's where TPL Nature Conservancy met out there $25,000, they stayed in $25,000, we stayed in $50,000, you stayed in $40,000. And DOLA put in $150,000, so that's what they took.
But it's still there, if we need it, we already made that commitment, that expression.
I really, I really hope that we can have good conversation about that project, because it would be transformational for this entire area.
You mentioned about the two administrator and city manager working together. That was done many, many years ago, but for whatever reason, it followed that.
Really?
I mean, that was, that was, I think, twenty-five, thirty years. It's something back, I wonder if there was some conversation.
Is that when Bill, was it...
Bill Paragon?
Bill Paragon was county manager.
I don't remember who was there.
He was saying that.
City manager, dude. Maybe that's what it was, maybe that's what it was.
I remember that.
Say to the county, they'd get a better rent.
Yeah, well, I'd like to, liking myself, honoring myself, I think we have good eyes of communication, we know frequently, it's a good, I think, a phone call is a good idea.
You know, it's in progress, we can create change by doing it now, let's begin, and you know, we're paying all of the, and you and I communicate a lot, so I think that's important. I mean, you have access, anyone has access to either group, and I think that's the important thing, just being willing to open up and pick up the phone, but you know, I really like to hear your point of perspective about how is the city of Rattom getting funding for the airport? I think, let's begin to research.
I can add a little bit to that, since we've brought up, the city of Rattom subsidizes the airport. We asked for their budget, they were not able to provide us a budget that specifically showed us how much the city of Rattom is supporting that airport, what they are doing. So we'll keep trying to get the city of Rattom's budget to see that because, now, they have more traffic, but as you guys alluded to, there's rentals and a lot of hangers that some of us pay for, suspiciously, the city of Rattom is backfilling that to a pretty high degree.
You know, I think tonight's meeting was really important, especially following up on that meeting that we had at the college. And DOLA, Go Colorado, that's what they want to see. DOLA, that's what they want to see, they want to see us working together, so this initial meeting, we could tell them, and next time we have a second meeting, we get the conversation.
The FAA did mention, since we talked to them yesterday, I'll put this on the table, too, the FAA did mention, excuse me, our consultants, mentioned that the FAA has funds available for revenue streams that are not, are not industrial park. They said it might be an opportunity for us to seek those types of funds to, or utilities, et cetera, et cetera. So opportunities there if we just...
You know, what's crazy is that, what's interesting is, we just had that traffic study, and if you look at our traffic study, on the back page of State Test, there's all the various grants that, plenty of opportunities are out there, like, what, three, four pages of them? Yeah, different funds that are available, I mean, every kind, I mean, it was amazing how many different funds are available often for Dollar Trek. A lot would have to do with infrastructure dollars, but it's there, I meant to apply to your 2025, 26th some cases. So I think that, you know, if you guys wanna look into all that list, see if there's any out there.
Do you retain a full-time grad rate?
Yeah, full-time grad. Delita is our grad.
We retain them, too.
But it's important that the next week, collaborate on either, like, doing that information, look into it, there might be something to do with that.
Well, Christie and Phil do a great job, and even Kim Chavez, she goes after her grants, her management, all of our departments kind of just look at stuff, and they do a good job of doing the best they can, and getting the grants. So I gotta applaud our staff, our administration here, at least they, they're not having a grant, but they do a great job of getting those grants.
And all three of us will research those grants to see if this is a possible fit, and if it looks like maybe we bounce them off of Phil and Christie, what do you think? And sometimes we get one of those, Peter.
I just wanted to add that through IIJ, OEDD has, is developing a way for rural communities to navigate through all of the funding sources that are coming through, and as a result, they're proposing a position for each cog to kind of serve as a grants navigator specialist for this. The job description hasn't been finalized yet, but I volunteer these regular meetings and require the feedback. For us, I have grant writing experience for the cog, we don't have technical experience, we don't have technical expertise, however, that's where we would be relying on our collaborations to fill in those gaps. But that is something we can rely, that for the region, we might have, be able to plan a one-year position, one-time, one-year position, I don't know how that will be able to, you know, sustain that, but, but there...
Oh, baby, because a ton of opportunities, and Congress came back, delegation was here last week from Atlanta College, and so they spoke about the opportunities, and one of the things that I remind lab officers is, when a company visits Denver, what happens in Denver is to be different, and they're looking more rural, and I said, remind us, and remember us. Go be right there, repeat my name, give me my business card, tell me, San Francisco County would like to meet with you, because that's the only way that we're gonna be able to attract. And so what OEDD, well, the representative that was speaking on behalf of OEDD, said, you know, there is exactly what you just said, that listing of all these opportunities, go in there and uncover, and tell them, hey, San Francisco County is perfect, because we have vocational college. So as far as training, we can do that just in time. We have an airport, I mean, we have opportunities here, but sometimes, like Louis says, those are hidden jewels, that we don't want it to be hidden anymore.
Oh, yeah, you brought up a good point about what happens when somebody comes into Denver, and Denver's too big. That was talked about a couple of years ago, I think it was OEDD, and the question was to them is, what do you do with that information? Do you say Trinidad is, you know, there's someplace to look into, is Alamoza someplace to look, or something, spread it out in the rural communities? I don't know if they ever did anything with it, but that was a, that's a different one.
I just have one more question, and I don't wanna go too long into this topic, but I wanna see where the city's at, if we were can at this point, if we're just, I think, last time we talked, we read we're gonna look into it with legal and Amsterdam, and we went forward. We did do the, what, the fifteen lots a year ago, and that development city was gonna start developing, I don't know, exactly, we did secure the tax, I think, of, I think on, or $260-some thousand. There's over $12 million in back taxes that were out there. Is the city working on that, moving forward to do something to that? And the reason I ask is because Donna is asking for what to do next for other back taxes that haven't been paid, and what her office can move forward to help secure, and then we can do a tax sale on the, on the properties, and then the contract, but that's the hesitant is building it because of the metro.
We've not had any more conversation on that in the last five, six months. I'll tell you what has, what happened, you know, of course, we do have to install the Board of Directors, and then within six months, we have to have an election themselves, but they also need funding to exit some of the budget, and an audit. And at that time, there was only like $46,000 for them to go conduct one of those items, and that's what aired up. So the big problem is, where do they come up with the additional, additional funding? The question that also came up, that is, there was additional money in there from the taxes that were owed, and I brought up the question is, can they utilize some of that money?
The county health taxes, the metro issue.
And put money in that so that the Board of Directors will move forward with what they have to do. The other problem that exists is that, we raised some, about $30,000 opportunity fees, $40,000 opportunity fees somewhere, just to hire an attorney, just to begin to look at it. And we hired another attorney about a little over a year ago, and I came back and said that we would have to invest probably at least $200,000 into cutting up the entire mess. The problem there is, if we, if we put out $200,000, there's no guarantee that someone's gonna come in and utilize the properties. So if we stuck $200,000 out there and nothing happens, the public's going to say, well, why did you use that $200,000 there, and not somewhere else that is more highly visible and more usable? So I think that's the big problem, that we would have to have a guarantee from a developer that if we clear that up, that they would come in and do something with that for us. So it's, it's, as you, we all know, it's a conundrum, right? It's like...
So what are our tools in the toolbox between the city and the county? If it's gonna be too expensive to move forward, that, how can the county help assist possibly?
The big, the big thing is, the basis that you mentioned is that the amount of taxes, because there's the, what, the $10,000 or $12,000 that's taken in taxes, there's the $23,000 bond issue that still grew out there. I've always said this all along, is that between the county and whether or not all the special districts out there, school districts, fire districts, would abate all of their, all of those taxes. That would be a beginning, but whether or not the women do that or not, they'd have to build a fighting, the bond company, and either sell that bond at, you know, 10 cents on the dollar, if they really believe that, because they've already written all that off many, many years ago.
Right, I think the issue about doing that is, if the metro district is not resolved with 53 mills out there on the property, who's gonna buy them anyway if they do? Because it's gonna, I'm gonna have a $900 tax bill on a half an acre lot, and it's not worth it to an investor, so there's some processes. So the tools that we have, as a Department of Labor member, is that the avenue, we wanna go with maybe the little hotel, like, life in the core, that's something with the city. If you wanna talk to Mr. Grable, like, he's the chair of that, and if that's something we wanna do, because if I'm gonna build a house out there, I don't wanna look at that. And that's step one, maybe, of multiple steps, because how else Felix and Tony gonna buy a lot, build a house, when they've gotta stare at that, or yourself, or anybody else for that matter? And then if that happens, well, then possibly people will start buying the lots, and then they start paying the taxes, they start going home, and that'll help with our housing push as well, because everything's there, and all the infrastructure's out there.
I'm not sure if Ken, does he look at that, 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 he's not with organs?
He has, he's issued notices even on that property. I'm trying to think what was, what the last issue was, but I'll put it back on his radar and have a conversation with him.
You know, I would imagine that if we had a couple of individuals coming and asking us, what would it take to clear out this whole thing, and then just attend a couple meetings, it was out there, it's 30,000, we had a conversation, but nonetheless, I think, as you're saying, if we were to identify an investor, would we be going to develop X number of lots, then I think the partnership, this collaboration I've talked about, then we would have to sit down and figure out a way to, how do we, from our perspective, your perspective, what do we need to make this happen?
There's a good point with collaboration, because it's not just hurting the city of Trinidad, it's hurting all of our county, all the holy school districts, and in the school, especially with the school district, the state still seems that they're receiving it, even though they're not, so their funding is really hurting. And I think a little bit of trans school district's part of that out there as well, but all the districts that are out there, the water, you guys have a, funding coming up in that area as well, so all these organizations are hurting, so I think it would probably do us best if we all come together, and if we have to find some grants possibly, or securing the legal fees possible, or get some organization to support DOLA, some attorney firm to assist us with this, I mean, we need to really reach out, even, even our own legal counsel that we have here with the county, maybe assist Mr. Now, so we don't have to incur, see if I have to incur all that, or the county attorney, I mean, we need to put public together to try to...
There has to be, I mean, like I said, the biggest thing is we get a developer to make some kind of commitment that we've cleared up, you know, at that point, I don't think the council would take that into serious consideration, because they know that there will be a benefit on the back end, but I think that would be good.
The biggest is buy it on the county, I think.
Exactly.
The biggest buy it on the county, I think, is that sitting there idle, you can't do anything with it, it's cost, it's probably, you're...
The major thing, like I mentioned, is that all the special districts out there, including the school district, is if they were willing to obey everything, means it's up there, to start from ground zero and move forward, because if they're gonna try to say, no, I want my taxes, nothing will happen.
Yeah, I think that might be a good, you know, work session, just on, you were can, you know, like...
We did one about a year ago, something like that.
What happened with the properties that did go for tax sale?
So the gentleman redeemed, what was his name, John, he's from California, and he's a developer, redeemed his taxes on it, and said it was a structural, but that's, that's against the city, and you can't, that's a city building, and not John, it's you guys.
And I think a couple other local people bought some of those properties, too, okay?
No, he redeemed all of 14, or whatever we had on the top of the block, but Donna recently put another 10 about three or four months ago, so the all these are in the process now. Don't ask me what all these stands for, I can't remember, this paperwork process, so that's in the works for 10 more lots, and I think those are all owned by one individual as well.
And I understand there were a couple of local business people that had bought, seen the lots out there.
There was a lady that came to town, Davy Stan Stevens brought her, with John Arino from the Main Street Lipstick, and she was a contractor, but we met and invested with her in about the housing shortage and stuff. And speaking with the realtors in town, there, there is a housing shortage for buying houses, but what Jared Tortorelli told me recently, especially for the mine employees, they don't have a shortage of finding them rentals, they can't qualify a rental, definitely, and that's, that's the other issue, so if they can't qualify a rental, aren't helping to buy a house, so...
All of our discussions really landed that the tax sale on those properties is probably the best option to get the properties activated again. The hotel property, I don't know if that one is behind on taxes, but if it is, that may be a good next one to put up for taxes. And the reason I say that is because if, really what the city's options would be is tear it down, and we would have to incur the cost of removing that, and taking it to our landfill would be an enormous burden on our landfill, and then we would leave the property, and hopefully we'd be in the same place we are now, we would have a vacant property that nobody would be able to afford to pick that up.
Phil, Phil, we talked to Rick Klein about what she's talking about right there, how the city can, can get the EPA to come in, remember that presentation that Rick Klein did with the housing affordability summit for Nationality, and they, they have way of UPA came and cleaned it up, and then they have some come through.
Through the brownfields grant?
Brownfields.
Talk to Rick Klein and ask him.
Do. But there's, there's some tools in our toolbox that we can utilize collectively together with multiple organizations that we have here, and, and as I always say, more brains are better than one, we put all these smart intel people together, and we can come up with some solutions.
Oh, yeah, you have a new city manager coming in, maybe have some ideas that you agree with them, that, if this gentleman has, he's been in several places, and we may have seen something like this, and who knows, he might ask that, which is...
And I didn't wanna go and meet the two or three, I'm like, oh, wait till they pick one, then I'll go meet them, so, meet and greet the other thing.
I wish I could remember which one was rumored, because both of them had challenging haircuts. I wish I could remember which one was Ruder, because both of them had challenging haircuts and glasses too.
He had a blue jacket and a tan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's Thinnerfield.
Thinnerfield, okay.
Well, congratulations on that election. And anything else, we've talked an hour and a half, and I think the conversation is pretty robust. And a little bit of action items? Maybe we will look at retired attorneys, since they're putting back to work. A coalition of, let's see what we find out. Thank you so much. Any other comments, was good to be over?
Say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moser, is your?
Sergeant Moser.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes.
Mr. Reese, sir?
I'm melting, yes.